Good evening. The meeting will come to order.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Melody?
Here.
Mr. Weininger?
Here.
Mrs. May?
Here.
And Mr. Valentine?
Here. Before we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance for this evening's meeting, we'd like to thank the City of Dublin for hosting us in their new council chambers. And most importantly, Mayor Chris Grooms is here this evening as well in attendance. She is going to be our lucky Pledge of Allegiance starter. So if everyone will please rise.
I would just like to give you all a warm welcome. Welcome to council chamber. This is probably the first time many of you have been here. And we at the city are just thrilled to be able to host our friends at the school board this evening. So this is where government happens in the city of Dublin. We opened this room in the end of July, and we're really proud of this space. And my fellow council members and I, there's a few things we're really committed to here. And that's that we're going to celebrate each other, that there will be a tremendous amount of respect and dignity, and that all people are welcome here. So Board President McValentine, I trust that you will carry that torch for us this evening. But we hope that you have a wonderful time here tonight. We are so happy to be your hosts, and we ask that you respect this space and the people that occupy it. So have a great night.
Approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Weininger. Questions or comments for members of the board? There being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Dr. Marshausen.
I'd like to invite Mr. Baker and our high school principals to the podium for the recognition of the 2021 National Merit semifinalists.
Thank you, Dr. Marshausen. It is my honor tonight to introduce our high school principals. This is Mike Allring, Principal of Dublin Jerome, Matt Perrell, Principal of Dublin Kaufman, and Bob Scott, Principal at Dublin Sciota. Mr. Allring.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. I will be announcing the, we'll be talking about the National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 16,000 semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program were designated from more than 1.5 million program entrants nationwide. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth about $30 million that will be offered next spring.
Good evening, Matt Perrell, Principal of Kaufman High School. Thank you for having me here this evening, and congratulations to all the young people here. Students entered the competition by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test used by the NMSC as an initial screen of entrance. For the third straight year, Dublin City Schools has the most National Merit semifinalists of any district in Ohio. This year, 40 for the sixth consecutive year. About 90% of the 16,000 semifinalists will advance to the finalist level in the competition. Every finalist will be considered for one of Merit Scholarships awards offered.
And I'm Bob Scott. I'm the Principal of Dublin Sciota High School, and I'd like to congratulate all of the kids here tonight for what we can clearly say is Dublin's best and brightest, and we're all extremely proud of you. And thank you to the parents and the community for helping them get to this point. It is from this group of 16,000 finalists that all National Merit Scholarship winners will be chosen. Merit Scholar designees are selected on the basis of their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Every finalist will compete for a scholarship that will be awarded on a rolling basis this coming spring. Thirty-two of Dublin City School students have earned commended scholar status, scoring in the top 50,000 in the United States out of the 1.5 million who entered. And on behalf of all the principals, we congratulate you, and we thank you, and we turn that over to, I believe, Mr. Allring.
Thank you, Dr. Marshausen. Board of Education, thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Mike Allring. I am the Director of Principal Leadership for Dublin City Schools, and it is my honor to announce the names. Dr. Marshausen, as you come up and have your name read, most everyone is here, there's a few who are not, but when your name gets read, please come up and shake Dr. Marshausen's hand, and you will receive your certificate. Nathan Anun. Jordan Bannan. Sorry, Rachel. Thank you, Mr. Starkey, for turning on my microphone. That probably helps. Suvaan is here as well, Suvaan De Mede. Isaac Frank. Avni Ghosh. Shivani Goganini. Sritan Gunde. Robert Shogo Hudson. Jordan Jones. Mithra Kanchidi. Emma Kim. Jessica Lee. John Lee. Michael Lin. David Lloyd. Gabriel Long. Rashikesh Makinini. Kritika Mishra. Naomi Mukha. Douglas Murphy. Yash Paniker. Jonathan Skarden. Ryan Siden sticker. Erica Shen. Akul Singh. Kylan Smith. Diva Soni. Dylan Tan. David Tang. Sarah Tolczynski. Mahir Vadur. Patrick Wang. Justin Wu. Dylan Yang. Emma Zhang. Brian Zhao. Congratulations to all of our National Merit Scholarship semifinalists for 2021. All right, now, if you would all like to stay for the meeting and stay for the COVID update that I'm about to give, you are more than welcome if you would like to exit at this point. We're not making you, but if you would like to, I will not be offended before I give a COVID update. So it's entirely up to you. Yes. All right, I will go ahead and get started as the celebration of our National Merit semifinalists continues in the atrium. As has been our custom and as requested by the Board of Education, these are our current numbers on where we are with COVID at this time. Within the last two weeks, we've continued to stay in contact with our medical advisory committee. In fact, we meet later this week. And the question that we're looking at now at the medical advisory committee is in addition to the numbers that we see as of this week, which you will see in a moment, my question for our medical folks is what's next? As we seem to have reached a plateau right now, and as we've talked, and as I talk to our health officials, and we look at the fourth surge starting to decline, they're talking about the fifth surge. And so we have to be prepared and look at what do we do better? What do we do differently? I've had about half of the docs on the committee say masks can't be our forever. And as we look at the next surge, what is, what are we going to be able to do here? The second thing that we're looking at what's next, and I'll share this a little bit later in my report, is as we prepare for the five to 11-year-old vaccines, what does that do for us? And what's that, what's the what's next when it comes to that? Preparing for seasonal flu, offering flu shots to our students. So really focusing on how do we stay in front of what a fifth wave could be when we start probably entering that between Thanksgiving and the winter break time period? I'm also extremely proud of our three principals who have stepped out at this time for making an exceptional homecoming experience during COVID. And I feel this is an important place to put this in our COVID report. Our students desperately want to be back to school as close to what would be normal. And at our high schools, we moved our homecoming dances to our football fields with tremendous success. At Jerome High School, 1,298 students actually scanned into the event. And for those of you who might not have high school kids there yet, there are often kids who buy tickets but don't really make it to the dance because they go out to dinner, they show up. They stayed, they danced, they hung out with their friends outside. At all three high schools, tremendous work. And so thankful for the team that we have at each high school that was able to do that and create this experience for our students. As we move to our numbers, our mask exemptions, and this is all available on our dashboard, our mask exemptions have remained stable. When I talk to Mr. Gill, who manages this, two up, two down. We'll have parents who withdraw the mask exemption if their elementary student may be quarantined once or twice, and they realize that wearing that mask in the elementary classroom allows them to stay in school. And some mask exemptions that have come in, but remained relatively stable for the past several weeks. As we look at our case count, our case count at this point is the lowest that it has been since the first couple of weeks of school. Right now, you know, a couple of highlights, 11 cases in our high schools, no student cases at Sciota. When we look at where we are in our buildings, we do have two buildings that are on our radar. One of those buildings was the result of a playdate that we can trace in our nurses through contact tracing, traced to a playdate outside of school. And then another one of our buildings, it was a problem in a classroom where it was students who were really close together. The same students ate lunch, several of them were on the bus. So we can trace a specific situation back to a specific cause in a specific elementary. As we move to our quarantine students, and this has been a topic of conversation around the state of Ohio, you could see a couple of buildings with high quarantine numbers. And one specifically goes back to that playdate scenario. One of the things that we've been asked quite a bit about for members of the board, the project that's taking place in Warren County with the Mason City Schools and the other Warren County Schools, that is a single county collaborative right now that's taking place between the Warren County Health Department and the Ohio Department of Health. It is not something that is available to other counties at this point. One of the reasons that it's able to be done in Warren County is all of the schools in that county have the capacity to do the contact tracing, have the capacity with the tests, because it is a test-heavy process to keep kids in school. In conversations that I've had with Commissioner Mizola, there are concerns that within Franklin County, not all of the schools have the capacity to do something like that at a county level. So I think for us, it would have to be something that was approved by the Ohio Department of Health, not something that would be done at an individual county level. Why is this important? Because the vast, vast majority of the students we quarantine never turned positive. So we have a large number of students who are home for a week, and they're just home for a week. And then they're missing that instruction. So if there is a way, and the state of Massachusetts did this, to test to stay, where you test students at a higher frequency. If the Ohio Department of Health feels that they get to that point, we will, of course, work with them. But right now, this traditional quarantine is where it remains. When we look at our modified quarantines, our numbers on modified quarantines, again, they remain relatively low. These are students who were either vaccinated and they were direct exposure, or they were wearing a mask when they were direct exposure in school. So 17 kids, one staff member right now in modified quarantine. Our numbers have been on the downward trend for the last two weeks. And in talking with our health officials, we would anticipate continued steady or decline in numbers for where we are right now. Incredibly thankful that this is where we are at this point in our dealing with COVID. And I cannot say enough about Mr. Andrus and our nurses. They work tirelessly, they work endless hours. We are doing the job of the Health Department when it comes to contact tracing. And we're doing it for the health and safety of our students because we were advised to partner with the Health Department, and we could have partnered with the staff that we had, but instead we upped our staff. Because if a kid is positive in school, we want to be able to get that contact tracing done immediately and as quickly as possible to identify anyone who is a close contact, to notify parents, to send the letters, and to do what we need to do. And our nursing staff, after last year into this year, they're rock stars, and the work that they're doing to keep our children safe is amazing. So that's where we are with our COVID numbers at this point. Do any of the board members have questions on where we are with COVID, current protocols, and things that we're doing?
Just a quick comment. I've heard some very positive things about the adjusted lunch, where they're separating them more. And so I think that's been well received and is helping out a lot.
And if you look at our middle school numbers, it shows that we've got a little bit more space at lunch. So thank you, Mr. Weininger. Okay. At this point in the meeting, I would like to introduce our Deputy Superintendent, Mrs. Jennifer Schwanke, who will get us kicked off on our next presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Marshausen, and members of the board. It is my honor tonight to introduce to you Dr. Bernice Hamilton. You all first met her late last spring when she was hired to be our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Since then, she has not stopped. She has been relentless in meeting with students, with staff, and with members of our community to really try to understand what we have in common and what we can do moving forward. She has proven herself to be an incredible listener and thinker and planner. So tonight, she's going to share with you what her plans are and about her team, and what we can do to move forward together as a community. So, Dr. Hamilton.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Schwanke, to our board and to Dr. Marshausen. It is indeed a pleasure to be with you tonight. Excuse me, I'm going to take just a few brief moments to talk to you about what I've been doing since I've been here, what Dublin City Schools has been doing, many great things, and also assessing the gaps or looking at those areas where in the short term, we need to move forward. So first slide, please. Wow. And I'm blind. So I want to talk to you about some of the things that I've been doing since I've been here. I started with Dr. Marshausen asking me to do diversity, equity, and inclusion training for our central office staff. At that time, I also asked him if our support staff could be included in those numbers, and of course, he said yes. So after that, I did diversity, equity, and inclusion training for our A-team or our administrative team. Our administrative team as well. I've also been to every school in the district. According to this slide, I've been to elementary schools and middle schools, but I've also been to all of our high schools. One way to be engaged is by actually putting the work in and putting the time in, not to just a little caveat or a little bit of braggadociousness for homecoming at Sciota. Last weekend, I was invited to sing the National Anthem with their choir, and I accepted that invitation. The kids were phenomenal.
And so were you. I recorded it later if any of the board members want to hear it.
But it's things like that that make the difference. I've always, I've talked about being a relational leader, and that's a part of me relating to people, particularly our students, our staff, and our administrative team. I've done some DEI professional development. I started with our elementary schools. I've been to, I think, three thus far. Dr. Marshausen offered a challenge to all of our school principals and said, "Invite her in." And many of them have taken him up on that challenge. So I've done professional development for many of our elementary schools and thus far for Griselle Middle School. Next slide, please. The work doesn't stop there. The work that I do extends outside of Dublin City Schools because I think it's important to let people know who I am and get to know the community. And because of that, I have also worked with our Dublin Police Department. I was invited in by Cheep Pies to meet with our command staff. I also have worked with our Police Department as part of a task force that's looking at how they can be the spark or to start a safe place within the city for anyone who may need that area of recognition or that safe place to be. So I've been working with that task force as well. I've participated with a group called Welcome Warehouse. They invited me to one of their meetings. I was a part of the Dublin Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force for the city. And finally, Rainbow Dublin invited me in to come to their inaugural night out or coming out night. So I participated in that. So I participated in that in representing Dublin City Schools. Next slide. The second bucket I want to talk about is where are we, meaning Dublin City Schools, with our DEI efforts? I told you about some things that I've done, but we have formed a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Team for the district. We affectionately call ourselves JDI. JDI means justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. We had our first meeting, our second meeting will be next Monday. In looking at this group of people, we have our work cut out for us. There are a number of things that we want to do. One is that we need to figure out who we are. So we're going to create a mission, a vision, and our functions. We are also looking at rebranding the Dublin Difference. You know, the Dublin Difference is wonderful, but if you ask 16,500 students or all of our administrative staff what it means to be the Dublin Difference, you would get 16,500 different answers, as well as a different answer from every one of our administrative team. So we're looking at putting something together that everybody can adhere to, including our board members, and it should be really phenomenal. It will include some of the policies that we have already come up, you have already come up with and put into place as well. Another thing that we are doing is looking at, for the JDI team, we're looking at creating ERGs, or Employee Resource Groups. Our Employee Resource Groups, some people call them affinity groups. The thing about our Employee Resource Groups or affinity groups is that they will be open to everybody, even if it has a particular name, it doesn't mean that they're exclusive. Everybody will be invited to participate, but they have to adhere to the mission and the goals of that particular Employee Resource Group. We have, we also have school-level equity committees. I've been involved with them. The district has put those in place long before I got here, and they're doing a terrific job. But some of them have invited me in to talk about how to continue to do the work, and also so that there's some consistency and cohesion among the different equity groups. The last thing that Dublin City Schools is doing that I want to talk about is school-level professional development, which I talked about in the last slide and talked about how I'm participating in those. Many, if not all of our schools, are ecstatic about getting involved in the diversity, equity, and inclusion work, and they are already leading that charge. Last slide. So the last thing I want to talk about is the short-term goals, which I again call assessing the gaps. American educator and author of The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, Stephen Covey, said this, "Seek first to understand, then to be understood." Seek first to understand, then to be understood. With that said, you all as a board have done a phenomenal job of putting wonderful policies in place and addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would like to invite you all to see what we're doing, to participate in some of the professional development specifically as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion, so that you see firsthand what it is that we're doing, so that you can have your voice heard, not just in creating policy, but also in continuing to push DE and I forward. The second thing is that we want to, and I talked about this with JDI, we want to create a unified message around diversity, equity, and inclusion, curriculum, policy, all of that. That's a short-term goal. Lots of teachers are asking for that. They want to know how DE, or what DE and I looks like when it comes to curriculum, what it looks like in teaching classroom lessons, how they can address some of the challenges in their classrooms around DE and I. Short-term goal, I'm doing a professional development around diversity, equity, and inclusion on October 15th, and we will address both of those issues. Continue DEI training for administrators, staff, and support team members. We don't want this to be a one-off. We don't want to say, okay, we created some policies, we do diversity, equity, and inclusion. It has to be ongoing, and unless it is ongoing, then it doesn't become normalized. The last thing is, short-term, I'd like to create a parent advisory group and a community advisory group as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. In creating both of those groups, one of the most important things that I think about is diversity of thought. I'm not looking to create groups where everybody thinks alike, everybody has the same idea about what diversity, equity, and inclusion consist of. I'm looking to invite people in who have differences of opinion in order to create a unified message. So with that said, that's my presentation. I would love to entertain any questions that you all may have for me at this time.
Thank you for taking the time to speak this evening. This is obviously a polarizing issue, not just here within the community, but obviously on the state and national level, and you've really stepped up as you come into the school district and provided a wealth of experience as we continue to navigate this. As you evaluate in the initial time here with the district, where we are, what we have in place, what do you think our biggest challenge is moving forward?
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. I think our biggest challenge thus far is people seeing diversity as one of those four-letter words, even though it's much longer than that. I always operate from a vantage point that diversity simply means difference. It means difference. It doesn't mean that if you have a difference of opinion, you don't fit or you aren't included. My biggest challenge would be to get people to understand that they too are included in diversity, or in, we use the term multicultural, it's kind of going by the wayside, but everybody has a cultural background as well. And I think until we can get people to understand that, there will always be those polarizing effects. And people have, because people have that misunderstanding that diversity doesn't include them, it's something that they fear, and they bury their heads or bury themselves in whatever it is that they're reading, whatever it is, whoever it is they're talking to. But I say, you know, my door is open. I don't want to talk to you on the phone, I don't want to address an email unless it's to say, "Come see me. Let's talk about it. Let's sit across the table from each other and have a conversation."
Thank you for that answer, and just as a follow-up to that, because this has come up in conversation, and I think that you've said it publicly as well, Dr. Marshausen. There have been some folks who would, I would say, would be skeptical of what we have done. You coming in as DEI Director, and I think quite nobly you have said, and you just echoed it, "We're going to open up our doors, we're going to show people what we're doing, we have nothing to hide, and we do not want to have any sort of appearance that there's anything to hide." Can you talk a little bit more to that for the sake of, Dr. Marshausen, for the sake of community?
Well, one of the things that we have offered, and that we have, just have to find the place to schedule that with all of the COVID protocols that we have now, is the opportunity to invite parents to come in and for Dr. Hamilton to provide the community, the same training that has been given to us as administrators, that we're providing to our teachers. It's a presentation that is enlightening, that begins with us all talking about what our biases are, and we all have biases. And regardless of what your background is, how do you identify where you are, and then how do you respect and operate with others? So one of the things is we hopefully come out on the other side of this surge, is to be able to find the space that we can schedule the event. So people who want to come, be part of this training with Dr. Hamilton, will have that opportunity.
Mr. Valentine, thank you. I believe also that we are the sum total of our lived experiences, and I say that often, but it's what we do with them that makes the difference. And if we are in a place where our lived experiences tell us certain things about certain people, it is my job to help undo those myths.
I just want to say, we are incredibly blessed to have you here. Thank you for being in this district. I know you had to move, and we really appreciate, I'm looking forward to seeing your fine work. And I enjoyed your podcast, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. May, I appreciate that.
Dr. Hamilton, thank you. I'm not sure if you remember this, because I was just a little tiny postage stamp on a screen, but I was, participated in the interviews where we selected our DE and I administrator, and you were one of the first. And you talked for about 30 minutes, and so I actually haven't had much of a chance in the past six months or so to hear you talk or to talk one-to-one with you. I'm still looking forward to when you have time. And I remember now why, although I didn't have a vote, I was just observing as a board member, I did feel like I didn't, and in fairness, I did watch all the interviews, but I felt like, okay, I have made my decision, and in fairness, you have to hear the rest of the candidates, and they were all very good. So then, as now, I knew that you could take on, and not take on, that sounds a little, that's not the right word, you could visit, discuss, converse with everyone, no matter what their perspective, and you were going to reach common ground. And I see that again today, and just between you and me, I did have a conversation with our superintendent about you before the choice is made, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and I absolutely remember you. Thank you so much.
With there being no additional comments, do you have anything else under presentations that you'd like to add, Dr. Marshausen?
Nope, we're good to go.
All right, public participation, I don't know where Doug went, there's Doug. Nope, we do not.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Work session topics.
I would like to invite Mr. Ireland up to give us our monthly TOELS Career and Technical Center update. Do we have your PowerPoint loaded, sir?
I don't believe so, but the report is in, yeah, it'd be a long meeting if we loaded that up, so. Good evening, appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you guys and give our update of TOELS. Everything is moving wonderfully at TOELS right now. Our enrollment, as I had said in the last meeting, is at the highest level we've had in the history of TOELS. It has dropped a little bit, which it always does at the beginning of the year. We always lose students, it seems to be a large number of students at the beginning of the year, just because they figure out they don't want to be there or other things happen. So we're still above, we have about 707 students, which is much higher than last year. We're excited about that. We are doing a few things. One, we just committed to an agreement with a group called Vasa Consulting. They are helping us with providing, getting us some grant funding for different programs, also some partnership development for our programs, and we hired them at our last board meeting, and they've already jumped in and are producing some results. So we're very excited about that, and we feel that it's going to be a good relationship down the road for us. As I mentioned last month, adult education has been a trouble spot for us, and we are currently trying to hire a new Director of Adult Education at TOELS. We had approximately, I think it was 40 applications, and we're interviewing, I believe it's seven to nine applicants for the position. So that, those interviews are going on right now, and we're hoping, the hope is by our next board meeting in October is that we'll be hiring a new Director of Adult Education that can spearhead that program and get that off and running. One of the other things that I wanted to bring up, just that's in the report, is we've actually, Dr. Hoadley has really jumped in and looked at our programming, and we're already talking about some possible new programs for next school year. We're doing some, looking to unmanned aviation pilot program, basically drone piloting. We've also are doing a lot of work, which is near and dear to my heart, in the construction trade industry, working with, we've got a group that of construction company executives that are coming together and talking about how best we can improve that program, both in the student academic level, but also the adult education level, to help out all the construction companies in this area. Also looking at a couple of new programs in advanced manufacturing and some computer technology programs. Again, what we're getting is a lot of our businesses in the area that we, that are on our business advisory councils are coming to us and saying, "We need, we need students in this, we need students in that." The other final thing I wanted to bring up is, I've mentioned before, last year, we have our two-by-two, is what we call it, our two-by-two internship program, where it's basically a student is two weeks working out in a company, two weeks at TOELS, and back and forth, and we flip-flop, and so that there's, that company always has a student working in that job that they set up for it. Currently, right now, we're at about 65 students that are out in two-by-twos, which is, just continues to grow, and it's, these students are getting paid. A lot of them, and it's unbelievable, they're getting offered jobs for when they graduate, and, you know, the companies are saying, "We will pay you to come to us, we'll pay for any secondary education that you need to do." So it's, this program is going great, and we're excited, and we're trying to expand it to other programs and that TOELS offers, so we're excited about that. That's about all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I just want to say thank you for always doing this good work. You're appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. It's, I enjoy it, so.
And the slideshow is really good. It really shows what TOELS has to offer for students, and I think it's a really exciting presentation.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent's Report. Couple really great pieces of news that we've shared and that we can talk about. In addition to our 47, 40 national semifinalists, we had 47 commended scholars. As you've seen, as we've shared, we have been ranked by Niche.com, third-best school district in Ohio, best in central Ohio, third-best teachers in the United States, second-best place for teachers to work in the United States, and we are incredibly proud of that. Also, this past week, we were notified that Jerome has once again been awarded the Blue Ribbon Distinction from the U.S. Department of Education, and we will be celebrating that on the field on Friday night at the end of the first quarter, in what is a pretty big game with Marysville. They're 6-0, we're 5-1. So there'll be a large crowd out at Jerome High School this weekend for all of those celebrations. On Friday, I have the opportunity to speak at our Golden Grad Lunch, Dublin graduates who have graduated at least 50 years ago. I think we're expecting over 140 Golden grads at lunch on Friday, so it'll be a great opportunity to talk to folks who have been part of the Dublin history and tradition for decades, and it'll be great to get to speak with them. And then on the opposite end of that spectrum, I met today with my student advisory committee, students from all three high schools, and Mr. Baker's giving me a look, because I asked the students at that committee, "What do I need to know that no one is telling me as superintendent?" And they told me. So while we can celebrate all these other things, the students gave me some marching orders today, and some things that Mr. Stark, we will talk a little bit later. orders today and some things that Mr. Stark, we will talk a little bit later, some things that they would like to see us change in our schools, some things they think we need to do. And it's been my experience having similar groups in other districts that often, we talk about who our consumers are. But when you go to the students who are in the schools every day and you ask them, "How are we doing? What can we do better?" They are, one, brutally honest, and, two, give you great ideas on ways to improve their experience in our schools. So, very thankful for that. Just a preview of some information that we're going to get more of later this month. Members of the Board are aware of Paul Fallon Research and the partnership we've had over a decade with Paul Fallon. And we have historically placed in the field every fall, what would amount to a customer satisfaction survey. And it allows us to ask some of the same questions year after year, to just say, "How are we doing?" Well, we didn't do one of these surveys in 2019 and 2020. So, our most recent data previous to this year was the 2018 data. Some of my peers thought we were a little bit bold by putting a survey in the field in the midst of COVID, in the midst of all these things, in the midst of a board election. But we did it anyway and we got back our results. And this is just in draft form. We'll have the full form available for the Board and for the public at a later date. But our community gives us an overall 80.1% positivity rating. 8.9% say fair, and only 2.5% of the respondents had a negative rating, negative overall opinion of the job that we're doing in the Dublin City Schools. When we break down this question to parents, that goes up to 85.9%. So, while there is, while we get, sitting up here, an awful lot of criticism, and it seems like the negative emails come in droves, overall, our parents have a overall positive opinion on the work that our teachers are doing, that we're doing as a school district. And I think it's important that we keep that in mind. That is supported by the anecdotal conversations that I think we all have out in the community, with the people who talk to us, who run into us, not on purpose, but by chance, at social events, at occasions. The amount of thank yous to our teachers, to our drivers, to our secretaries, to everyone on our staff. People are overall very positive during what is a very turbulent time. We also put in the field recently, a thought exchange. And thought exchange is a tool that we've used to engage parents and the overall community, where we can ask them a question and they get to provide an answer, but then they get to see the answers other people have put to, and they get to rank those answers. And this is a tool that's used in the business world, in the corporate world, and they now have an education side for us. So, recently, we asked, we piloted this thought exchange, and we asked, "What's the job of the Dublin City Schools? What should we be focused on?" Over 2,100 people participated, they shared over 2,000 ideas, and there were 57,000 rankings for our thought exchange. And one of the cool tools that we can get is kind of a word bubble or a Wordle. So, if you look at this slide, the bigger words were the ones that appeared the most and that received the highest ratings. What are the things that we should be focused on? Success, skills, future, thinking, preparation, college, life, opportunities, communication. What are the smallest words? COVID, vaccines, masks, mandates. Lowest ranked? The things that seem to be the loudest conversations? It's not what our community wants us focused on. So, of course, we're focused on health and safety. Of course, we're on with our health commissioners and we look at our data, and Mr. Gill and Mr. Baker can tell you, and Mr. Andres, we look at our data every day, multiple times a day. I get every email that goes home to parents from every school district, every time there's a positive case. When I get several, we jump right into the data. But what should we be focused on, according to Mom and Dad? We should be focused on skills, preparation, and getting kids ready. So, this tool will be used to help us as we look at, what is a vision and a mission for the Dublin City School District? How does this link up with the work we've talked about with Tim Kite, with our values and our behaviors and our outcomes, as we build the culture that we so want for our students in Dublin? So, those are the things that we've been working on. Our team is working incredibly hard, and Dr. Bailey's team, to keep that academic focus. We all work together to make sure, as we look at the diversity, equity, inclusivity work that Dr. Hamilton talked about, I think it's important that we, as a district, come up with a good definition of what is equity for us. And as we talk about it, and I've said this before and I have, this is John's definition, it's not our definition. Every student needs to be valued in every classroom. Doesn't matter LGBTQ, color, race, economics, whatever label we want to have on people, every kid is valued how they are when they come into every classroom. Every kid has access to an elite curriculum. Doesn't matter if you're at Sciota, if you're at Jerome, if you're at Riverside, or if you're at Dep. Every kid has access to an elite curriculum, and we prepare every student at a personal level to be successful. When I talk about diversity, this is what I'm talking about. I think we have to have this conversation as a district. What are we talking about? Because I think, once we define it, then when Dr. Hamilton has those conversations, when we talk about, yeah, I have biases. I'm a white Lutheran pastor's kid who grew up in Connecticut. My experiences shape who I am. I think about things maybe differently than someone who grew up in a rural Ohio small town. Okay, so let's talk about it. And I think we can do that, and Dr. Hamilton's the one to lead us. And finally, and I went a little out of order here, we put a survey in the field today to parents of elementary students. And we simply asked parents, "When the vaccines approved, do you plan on vaccinating your child?" And it went to approximately 5,800 students today, huh? 8,500. And how many do we have back in less than 12 hours? So, we have more than a third of those back already. And the last number, and I'm not going to ask him to do the math now, we were in the high 70s, or the percentage of parents who were going to plan on getting their children vaccinated. The other question we asked, and we're not pushing this, we just want to know from parents, "Do you want us to host vaccine clinics?" Because the Governor's Office and the Ohio Department of Health have been talking with Dublin, because our vaccination rates are so high in our other areas, is this a place that they would pilot in-school vaccine clinics for our students and parents? So, we're not advocating right now for a vaccine that hasn't been approved yet. We're gathering data because, in my ideal world as the Superintendent, if they approved it on Monday, if I could start running clinics on Tuesday or Wednesday, we want to be ready to go. And I don't think you can wait until something happens, you prepare ahead of time. So, our team's working on this. The Governor's Office has asked us to share our data with them, which we will do. And I've said, we'll get that to them by Friday with what we have. And I think there's a potential partnership there that would allow us to be out in front when this comes time. We are also working with our teachers' organizations and support organizations. Mr. Andres is working to see. I know many of our teachers and our support staff have already gone and gotten their boosters. They announced that on Friday afternoon, and I was at football games Friday night with staff members who were scheduling their appointments for Saturday morning to go out and get their booster shots now that they could. We were among the first. So, anyone who took place in that February vaccine clinic that was run by the ESC, they're seven months out now. So, we've got folks doing that, but if we can bring some of those clinics to our schools to just make it easier for our employees, we already have flu shot clinics up and going and people able to sign up for those. Again, keep everybody safe, keep everybody healthy, and keep everybody in school. That's where we'd like to be. Any questions for this group or for me? Mr. Melody, I do owe you an apology from the last meeting because we talked about bus driver shortages and then sent out a note after that. And just so that we are all aware, we're having a hard time finding bus drivers, we're having a hard time finding custodians, we're having a hard time finding substitute teachers. The job market right now is putting us in, or bus drivers, it's everybody, in a rough situation. I've met with our bus drivers since the last board meeting, some of our leaders with DSA. And as we, as we talk, we've got drivers who are driving extra routes all over the place, we've got late buses, and it's not because we're not running buses on time, it's because they're running multiple routes. So, I get those emails too. So, when I get the bus 111s running late today, it probably wasn't bus 111, it was probably somebody else's covering bus 111's route and they ended up running another route before they could get there. It's, the détente for holding back on subpay has ended, and we're back to the Cold War. In fact, I am asking you tonight to improve increases to substitute teacher pay, to classified pay, so that we can stay competitive in a market where it didn't last very long and the rates started going up. Our current employees are doing amazing work. Teachers are covering classes when we need teachers to cover classes, we are shuffling the kids around. And as someone who also sits on the Chamber of Commerce Board, it's not an education issue, it's, everybody's struggling to find their workers. So, I'll take any comments or questions now.
Absenteeism rate for the transportation is low. Our absenteeism rate for custodial maintenance is relatively high, but for the transportation, it's relatively low. But I will say this about the bus drivers, as hard as they're working, when they have some time off, they have, they're helping us with lunches. I mean, they're an amazing, amazing group of people, tossing in every which way they can, and they're helping us with lunches on mid-days when they don't have work. It's really something, really something. It's been, it's been a lifesaver for some of our middle schools too and elementaries, where we're splitting up lunch and need that extra help.
It's great to hear. All right, there being nothing else, Treasurers' Report.
Um, Dr. Marshausen, you mentioned vaccinations. Doctor, I mean, Dr., Mr. Andres, myself, actually talked, and we're already running with it, with Walgreens already, who's doing our flu shots. And today, for our staff, for the booster, and also with checking in with when and if, you know, 5 till 11 gets approved, to see if that's a feasible option with them, and we'll check with other vendors too. So, you said one thing and we ran with it already, so we're doing that through our wellness program. So, as far as stuff on the agenda this evening, we do have two transfers. One transfer is our normal, every-year sinking fund, transfer from the General Fund to the Energy Conservation Sinking Fund. This is related to some energy conservation projects we did about 10 years ago already, actually 11, I think, 11 or 12. And at that time, they issued what's called Qualified School Construction Bonds, or QSCUBs, that were offered through where the federal government reimburses us for the interest. So, they're interest-free bonds that were issued. So, as that requirement of the mandates are part of that issuance, we have to every year move money into that sinking fund as there's one, I like to call a balloon payment, if you're thinking of your loan or your mortgage or something at the end in 2025. So, just as every year we do that transfer, the idea with the General Fund is you have savings due to utilities and the energy conservation projects, you use those savings to retire the debt, so. And then, we have transfers, we're consolidating some stuff at the high schools into some Digital Media Academy and Digital Graphics and Social Media Academy over at Emerald Campus. So, you'll see some of the transfers from those existing clubs at the individual side of Jerome and Kaufman High Schools into the Emerald Campus. And then, we have some student purpose clauses. The big one this evening is with the opening of Eversol Run, all the student activity purpose clauses to start the process, so. And we do have one donation, so just normal activity. Is there any questions on anything, whether it be what's on the agenda, vaccinations or anything else?
I have a general question. I was bragging about our Treasurers' Department last night, and I was trying to remember the number of years we had won the Auditor's Award. Do you know off the top of your head?
That's a great question because Mr. Harris asked me the same thing last night too. So, I have to look into it. I know we've received it every year since I've been here, since 2016, or come back in 16. I was here previously, I know you've received it. I'd have to go back and kind of look through the Otter States website, but the Otter State Award is a great honor to have, is in the sense of the Accountability Award, is you have no major findings, no major citations. And I, you know, I've been with this district off pretty much since 2003 for three years, and I don't remember us ever having anything like that. So, I'm not sure how long they've actually had the award present, but I know we've got it ever since and we've never had anything. We pride ourselves on that, and our great financial statements, accountability, internal controls with that. Our audit's going on right now, our annual audit, and we'll have usual results come November and December. So, you know, we're happy to have him, some people cringe when they come in. It's a one thing that, you know, we know, we know we do a great job, and it's just validation for what we do, so.
Well, you have good reason to be proud and it's good for our community to know that you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
Yes, that is called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
That's what I was trying to remember, I can remember the acronym.
Yes, yes, and the acronym is actually not to be used anymore, according to GFOA, and we can talk about that later. But this-
That's why I didn't use it.
Yes, 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 it is called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So, anyway, so, and it's, we've had that award, I believe, even before I was here, 2003, that goes back to the 90s where we get, it's a big, very big document. It's light reading if you want to, before you go to bed. But actually, really, I really use it, there's some good stats tables in the back, which is an optional thing, and it's where we go above and beyond and do that information, where you can get a lot of good information from in that standpoint. So, you know, from both the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, but also ASBO, which is Association of School Business Officials International. So, from both awarding agencies, we've received that for, I mean, ever since I've been here.
And thanks, Brian. And other than on my bookshelf, where do you find that?
They're posted online underneath Finance Department's page. We should have all of them quite far back, so.
I just want to note that that's very transparent.
Yes, yes, yes. And you'll also see on that website be our current five-year forecast, too, is also on there, plus other information that you'll have on there, and so.
It's right under, yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, so it's, like I said, it's very light reading, but good information.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Curran? There being none, it's recommended by the Treasurer, the Board of Education approve Item 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. May, seconded by Mr. Weininger. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Reports from the Department of Academics and Student Learning.
We have nothing for you tonight.
Department of Operations.
Nothing here as well.
Bam bam bam, pressure's on. HR.
Good evening. I'm all the stands between everybody and having a good evening, right? So, we have a few items on. I'll start with what Dr. Marshausen had mentioned earlier in that this is an item for subpay rates that are on both the certified agenda and the classified agenda. We're asking you to raise the rate for certified employees by $25 a day. So, the new rate would be $155 a day for day-to-day, and then $180 after 61 days in a position. For classified staff, we're also asking you to raise the rate by $1.50 to $16.50 an hour. We feel like that's something we need to do to remain competitive and continue to attract our licensed and non-licensed substitutes to Dublin City Schools. On the certified agenda, there is a certified nurse hire. Ms. McDaniel has been doing contact tracing for us, and she's on the agenda for approval to be hired as a nurse in our district. There are a few more six-period pay classes to approve. Most of these are district nurses who have done an incredible job of managing pandemic-related issues, doing contact tracing in addition to their normal day-to-day duties. They have been on the front line of COVID issues for our district and are routinely working well beyond their normal hours to make sure our students and staff are safe and following protocols. So, they're on the agenda for your approval as well. There is a request for additional course hours for Special Education Summer School, which have previously been approved by the Board. And then we have several fall-winter athletic supplementals and pupil activity supervisor contracts, academic and extracurricular supplementals for the academic year. So, that's on the certified agenda. On the classified agenda, there are three resignations and one retirement. Retirement is Cynthia Johnston. She's retiring from Kaufman High School as a clinic aide. She's been with the district for four and a half years. We're welcoming four new hires to our classified ranks in Dublin City Schools. And then we have several salary changes and one unpaid leave of absence on for tonight in the classified area as well. For stipends, there's 10 that are on for your approval. Half of those are to approve the development of online courses in the DCS virtual programming area. There is one that's a request to approve a diversity, equity, and inclusion district and building leads that you'll find. There's approval of an MTSS, which stands for the Multi-Tier System of Support Coaches in our middle and high schools. We have a faculty manager for Jerome Ice Hockey, and then a district apex lead, and then the Superintendent's Teacher Advisory Committee. So, those are on for your approval tonight. Any questions about any of the agenda items?
I have several. First one's for John. What do you think this bidding war is going to turn into with regard to subs?
I think it's probably where it is for now because it starts to get where you're approaching what pay would be for Bachelor Zero. And when you get to that point, you would just hire people to be teachers and assign them as subs. One of the conversations that Brian and I have had and that our candidate has had is to go back and look at what's the fewest number of teaching subs we had any day during the 2018-19 school year? Like, if you look at a pre-COVID period, and is that the number of subs that we should just have? Because once people get to that 60-day mark, they now are going to be at 180 a day. And if you can lock them in, and if we know there's not a day we don't need 43 subs, if that's the lowest that we need, why wouldn't we just have 43 subs at that rate and just say, listen, you're going to work here every day? We've done some things, Mr. Weiniger, where we've contacted colleges and universities within the last week and said, we'll hire your December grads as permanent subs. Now, we prefer to have the 22-year-olds in the middle schools than in the high schools, but it would allow us to get those people locked up. It also allows us to kind of test drive and see what are their skills? If we can keep them in some similar buildings so that principals can work with them, our team gets to work with them, it gives us the opportunity to see who are the young rock stars. So, when we look at our partners at Capital Ohio State, Otterbine, Ohio Wesleyan, let's let them know, hey, if you're a December grad, we'll take you. So, we're trying to get creative, but we also, there's going to be a point for all of us that we reach a top because you'll just start hiring folks to be those substitutes.
And I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but we should be about finished with reading evaluation for the year. Are we going to need any additional resources to support some of the numbers that we're coming up with? Maybe somebody else here?
I can speak to that. We have, and I say we with all respect to Dr. Bailey, Shannon Hunt-Stokie, and her reading team. They met with every single reading service team at the elementaries. As I said in my board update, you know, we looked at every single child, about 8,000 students, where they are reading currently and identifying any areas of aggression. We did see a need, an increased need this year. Now, Dr. Bailey's team worked very, very carefully to move staff around so that we could serve DCS virtual, and so we could put Title I support, reading recovery support, and reading support in place. So, we did ask for one more reading position. Part of that, too, was a response to inaccurate enrollment projections at kindergarten. Our enrollment projections did not turn out to be what we thought. So, we did have to move a .5 reading support teacher into kindergarten at Hopewell because they were short. Some students came. We didn't think were out there. And so, really, we just ended up needing a .5 reading support, although it looks like a full-time, if that makes sense. But a real shout-out to the team. It was a lot of hard work and a lot of number crunching, but we feel really, really good about it.
I do think that when we look at our summer bridge program, we're going to need the more robust summer school again. We're seeing that our kids who have gaps have gaps. And it's not reasonable to say we're going to catch up from 18 months in the next eight. So, I do think that summer program that we called Bridge, that was designed by a collaborative of six school districts with the knowledge that some of our gaps, it may take school year, summer, school year, summer, school year to get kids back on track. And we see it most with our youngest learners. I've been going to PTO meetings and the staff meetings, and you hear the first graders are like kindergartners. The lower the student in their age, the more this has profoundly hit them. But on the bright side, the more chance we've got to catch up. So, the opportunity is going to be there to catch them up too.
And the class, thank you very much for those answers. I really appreciate it. The classified raise for sub, does that also apply to bus drivers? And we're going to try at that rate for the bus drivers, and then if we need more, we'll look at that sometime in the future?
Yes, and we're, our team in talking with our bus drivers, they have ideas on how to attract additional bus drivers. So, it's going to have to be grab a neighbor and get them a CDL because, and if any of you are interested, I know, Ms. May, you have some time. We need bus drivers. So, we're going to try to recruit and get to that point.
I'm sorry. I have a lot of questions. The last one is Heidi Ross, the new central, obviously the face of the district. When, you know, people come in, what date does she start? Because I'd like to come over and introduce myself and see her.
She starts on October 6th, Mr. Weiniger.
October 6th?
6th, yes.
Thank you.
And Lisa's until the end of October, so there's some crossover in training, right?
They'll have about three weeks together.
I just have a question about the increases for the subpays. How are we with other, in comparison to other central Ohio districts?
So, Mrs. May, one of the things that we did before we proposed something is we did a polling of different districts around the outer belt. And so, we have, there are four districts that have raised their rates within the last two to three weeks. And so, those rates are kind of, they're pretty much in line with where we are. There's actually a few districts that will cap out after 60 days a little bit higher than we will. So, we're seeing this kind of, as Dr. Marshausen, it's almost like a bidding where different districts are raising their amounts, but we're in line with where we're seeing districts go at this point. A lot of them are increasing by about $30 a day is what we found.
We're staying competitive.
We are competitive. We feel like the rates that we've asked the Board to approve are competitive.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. It is recommended by the Superintendent, the Board of Education approve items 12A, 12B, and 12C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Weiniger, seconded by Mr. Harris. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Future agenda items? Before we leave this evening, we didn't have an opportunity for Board members to have comments or share out. And obviously, we have chances as discussion occurs throughout the course of the meeting. But I thought it was important to take a moment to discuss where we are as a Board, as a community, and revisit a little bit of the discussion that we had at our last meeting, and quite frankly, that we've had at previous meetings as well. It has been an interesting year and a half plus. The five of us, our administration, our teachers, our staff have been through quite a bit. We've seen hostile board meetings. We've had plenty of hostile emails. Social media has been ridiculous. And it's only heightened. And we find ourselves here this evening. We have two police officers. We're not live streaming. We're going to put it available to the community later. We've continued to put security measures in place. Unfortunately, things only continue to be heightened and, for that matter, continue to get worse. We had a, or we are approaching, we're a little bit outside of a month now of a board election. We have three seats up. Sue's not running. Lynn and Rick are running. We've got some candidates who are here with us this evening. Inevitably, amongst those eight people, three of them are going to be working with Scott and I and Dr. Marshausen, Mr. Kern, and our team. I am concerned about the path that we are going as a community, both for our sake as we sit here, as well as where this election is going as well. We have an opportunity to take the high road, to run elections, or campaigns, I should say, that are respectful of our opponents, that are respectful of the people who are sitting up here this evening, who are respectful of our administrators and teachers. And for whatever reason, somebody today decided to start an anonymous Facebook blog going after one candidate. I cannot believe that we have reached the point where that is okay. I can't believe that we've reached the point where the people pushing that blog are associated with people running in the campaigns. We've got to do better. Inevitably, we are all going to come together and work together for the betterment of this community. And then we're sitting in here a month out, and that's already where we are. My challenge to Rick and Lynn, folks who are running for Board of Education, is to take a public stand against any negative campaigning. There's no place in our community for it. There can be difference in thoughts and opinions, sure. But to get into the character assassination side of things is downright ridiculous. So, I wanted to end with that this evening. Again, all eight of those candidates have Facebook, utilize Facebook, or using it for their own campaigns. I think that all eight of them should step up and denounce any sort of negative campaigning in the next month ahead. Any questions or comments before we end?
President Valentine, that was excellent and much appreciated. Would it be possible for you to continue forward? I think we all, many, all of us, I think that the debate was excellent. I think the candidates discussed the issues. I think everybody learned a lot. I learned a lot. The candidates were very polite. There were times when somebody would compliment the other candidate. And so, you know, 16 years ago, that's when I was first elected, Lynn was first elected, and Gwen Calendar was first elected. There were nine candidates, somewhat similar to now. And we had, if we had nine candidates, I bet we also had nine debates. And I think almost every PTO had a debate. I think the Rotary and Chamber may have had a debate. However, the point, I think that, Chris, you said it excellently. And to flip that over, if that debate went so well, and let me compliment the Asian Pacific Islanders, American Public Affairs, and their moderator, who did an excellent job. If that debate went so well, and that promotes what people want to learn about what the candidates stand for, I would ask respectfully, and, yes, I'm going to go with ask. Ask our PTO presidents to redouble their efforts to either have live or online sessions, much like last night. I think we need them. I think they promote solid, constructive discussion, and people in our community can see where the candidates stand. So, I just wanted to, we were literally thinking the same thing today because we had a discussion. And it occurred to me that the solution, or a solution, is not only your admonition to campaign as you would govern, and because you might sit next to a person that you had some differences with, and you wouldn't want your, like, if Scott and I, we wouldn't want our friends or supporters to say things inappropriate about the other at any time. So, rounding that out, I think it would be excellent if I could call out to our PTO presidents, the Chamber or the Rotary, to have some more debates, either live or online. And thank you for the additional time. I appreciate it. And very well done to Lynn and Rick and Lindsay and Tiffany who are here, and then all of our candidates, all of the candidates that participated. I thought it was really, really well done. So, thanks again to the Asian Pacific Islanders, American Public Affairs group. So, now I'm really finished. Thank you.
I'd like to say challenge accepted.
There being no additional comments, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mrs. May, seconded by Mr. Weiniger. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh.